Okay, folks, six o'clock. Call the meeting to order.
And Anne's got her earbuds in there.
Are there any additions to the agenda from anyone?
No.
I have one. Brian Kavalek will be joining us on Zoom regarding the town plan grant application and resolution endorsement. We'll do that after both the conditional use hearings. So we need to approve the minutes from September 2nd. Somebody want to make a motion?
Oh, make a motion.
I can second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're all set then. We move on to Mark and Christine Filango. Is that how you pronounce it? R.G. Okay. Are you here to represent yourself?
I am.
All right.
John was going to assist me.
So you need approval because you're in the Shoreland Overlay area. And there are certain rules to follow and restrictions there. So do you have anything you want to say to begin with?
I'll start. So.
He's going to speak.
Sorry.
What a guy.
I'm the neighbor at an interested party.
Okay.
And also the designer. So the Filango's house was damaged, total loss, in a fire. An unfortunate fire last Christmas. Probably aware of. So with that opportunity where the house had, it is a total loss. There was nothing salvaged over there. So that went in a dumpster. And the intention then, as a rebuild, is to build exactly on the exact same footprint that was there. But having lived through two floods now as well, well, you were probably there for one of those, it doesn't make sense to put it back down at that height. So the plan is to raise it up on the exact same footprint that was there and pretty much build the cottage in like kind.
Looking at, go ahead.
How, how high above the lake roughly were you and how high above it will you be?
The water came up about five feet.
It was about six, we were about six feet under.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't that land high up?
People think it is, but it's, it's, our two cottages, I think. I saw in the neighbor, and I think we're the lowest ones out there. And they came up about, my grave, my, my main floor was a little bit higher than hers. So came up about four feet into my house and came up about five feet into Filango's.
So you go another two, three feet higher or?
Oh, yeah, the new main floor will be two feet above that.
Yeah, and looking at the plans, I can see that you are providing louvers at the basement level to allow for the fish.
That's right. The fish, and mostly the water. The water.
Comes and goes.
Hopefully it'll never get high enough to get into the first floor, the new first floor.
Figure if we build it up, it won't even happen, guys.
That's why you get a tent for a wedding, too, right?
So you're not changing anything as far as footprint, even with the deck?
Deck's been removed. It's going to be put right back where it was.
Okay. With the balcony?
With that one, yeah. That's right. A smaller.
Yeah. And I have one question. Looking at the plans, which look nice, why is it that the plans do not have a line at the peak of the roof showing you the absolute height of the building? It goes up to.
Oh, for the high point of the building?
Yes.
Um, you know, it's funny, I don't generally do that. That's not the definition of the height of the building, so I kind of don't.
Well, in our regulations, it is.
I don't think so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, check out, and I could be wrong, but look at your definition of height.
It looks like you're within it, but.
Yeah, it, it, it probably is either way.
Yeah.
But when I calculate height, so if you go to your definitions.
Yeah.
And different towns are different, so I could be wrong on this, but let's take a peek, because I'll give you that information.
Page thirty.
Yeah, building height is the vertical distance measured from the average elevation of the proposed finished grade around the building to the highest point of the structure.
Yes.
Oh, so.
That's outside, would you say?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Outside grade.
The high point is the peak of the roof.
Oh, okay, so most towns interpret that where if the grade is around the eve, you measure it just to the eve, straight up from there.
Okay.
But either way, I can give you that, I can give you a.
Yeah, well, we calculated it.
Okay.
Based on the ten inch pitch, but.
Yeah.
Looks like you're at about thirty-two.
That's, that's probably right to the peak. Yeah. You already did the cap? Eighteen. It's going to be, yep, right around thirty-two.
And the average ground level is the lowest point of your, of the house, like one of the corners, to the highest.
That's right.
Midpoint of that. So from there to the peak, you're allowed thirty-five feet.
Right. So you're no higher than thirty-two.
Is that pretty standard, you think, with architects not showing it?
I've done it both ways on my drawings. If it's required to ask for the town, I'll, I'm always trying to give as much information as the town's looking for.
That just relieves us of having.
Sometimes the reason I, I'll stay away from it is because what's important to me is the height of the walls and the pitch.
Yeah.
And I'll actually let the contractor do the math, because if I call out the feet, he might able to come up with something different. So I typically will call out the critical dimensions.
Well, as long as you or an architect is here to clarify.
Yeah.
Then that's good.
Excuse me. How many, the original house, how many bedrooms, how many baths?
Two bedrooms in the original.
And baths?
One.
And the new one?
Two bedrooms.
One bath.
That's right. No, two bedrooms, two baths.
Two baths, you're adding a bath.
Yes.
Because it's existing.
I guess the question I would then ask, the same septic system?
Yep.
It's based on bedrooms.
That's right. Okay.
Is it existing slab or are you doing a pier style?
We're going to do, we're going to do frost walls on the new one. There were, there were, the existing foundation was pretty cobbled together. It was beams and some piers and some concrete and some, so that's gone. We're going to redo with frost walls.
Nice.
Is this a full-time residence?
You're going to stay in Weston when you could be in Plymouth?
I know, it's crazy, right? I never understood the people living twenty minutes from there. We move in for Memorial Day through Labor Day. It's our vacation.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
No? Well, we will make a decision most likely this evening and let you know within the time required by letter. I could call you if you need to know, if you're dying to know.
The sooner we know, the better.
Okay.
It'd be helpful, because we haven't ordered materials yet for the house, but we'd like to.
Yeah.
It's a shortfall, we'd rather not miss another semester.
What are you doing, stick filter modular type system?
Combination of both. Good question. Yeah. We priced it panelization and a lot of it's going to be panelized.
That's, it's a great way to go.
Yeah, I'm finding that more and more.
It's, it's more competitive?
Yes. And when you're fighting against snow like we are, it's a huge advantage. If they can deliver the walls and put them up in a day.
Yeah.
Nice to be able to plan.
And then built-in enclosed factories away from the elements.
Yeah.
Insulated, wiring, everything's ready to go usually.
We're not doing that part, although they'd offer you.
Yeah. It's worth it.
Did the, the wiring do?
Oh, yeah. Because all you do is, it's like putting Legos together.
Yeah, but then you can't change, make a lot of changes.
It's the way to, sometimes the way to go with us.
Yeah.
It's the way of the future, anyway.
Yeah.
Stick built's going like the dinosaurs.
Yeah, and like, you're still paying for it, because the guys are building it in the factory or on site, but you're saving the time.
It's, you save a lot of money usually, too, because the materials are already there.
Oh.
And they have, they should have it in stock, really. So you, you don't get like the fluctuations from building materials. And the tariffs these days, I don't know if they've hit the industry yet.
Some of the wood's starting to come down a little.
Is it?
Yeah. Which is nice.
Okay, if there are no questions for Mrs. Filango, we'll close the conditional use hearing on that subject and move on to the Keating property. And you're here to speak for?
Maureen.
The Keatings?
Yes.
Okay. So, once again, we're in the Shoreland Overlay. So why don't you tell us what you're.
Well, I can almost copy and paste a little what I've already said. So Maureen bought this property and she also lived in it during the flood. She and her son. And she decided she doesn't want to do that again, which maybe will be a common theme for somebody who's coming through here. So she hired me and we are doing something, something very similar to what I did across the lake, in that we are removing the existing house. We thought about raising it and renovating it, but it really, by the time we really looked at doing that, it wasn't saving us any money. It was a pretty astronomical, astronomical number to raise it. So we're going to demolish it and build the new house exactly on the same footprint. In fact, we're going to keep the same foundation.
And are you going up a level like you did?
Yep. Exactly what we're doing. I probably didn't put that number on here a minute, but I'm sure you're going to ask for it. My, this is too small for me to see, I apologize, but I can confirm that I think this is right around thirty-three feet to.
On your lower level, on this house, you're not showing any louvers?
Oh, there, well, it's, there, there will be for serving. And it'll, and I'm happy for you to put that as a contingency for the permit. I didn't put that note on there, but that's certainly the plan.
Okay.
And it's open, it should be open on the lakeside.
So it's louvers as necessary?
Yes, to meet the requirements.
Is that, it's our limit. Is that the grandpa's number?
Thirty-three-ten?
Yeah. Yes.
No, it's pretty easy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Love easy applications. Your neighbor is working now, is that correct? Is he doing something now? Keating's neighbor?
On the south or of him or the north?
North.
I think somebody is doing something there, but I'm not privy to it.
I believe we reviewed that.
Oh.
Last year.
Okay.
Yeah, he said he was going to do a lot of work on Salma, that guy, right?
Yeah.
Who's going to raise his slip to? Also.
So again, it's the exact same footprint?
Yeah, using the same foundation, not changing anything.
There's no Jeep in that one. There's a Jeep in that one, no Jeep in this one.
Yeah, how come the first one had a Jeep in it and this one's empty?
Because although you've seen Christine's birthday present for herself.
It's a Jeep. I figured, I need to be able to fit the Jeep.
No, it was in there very specifically, actually.
All right. And who was that guy standing there?
It's me. Somebody I'll meet someday.
No questions? Anne?
Nope, I'm good. Looks good. I'm looking at the plans, I took pictures of them this afternoon on my phone, so I'm kind of, these little things, but all looks good to me. No questions.
Well, if that's the case and there's no other questions, we're going to close that hearing also. So now, we're going to go into our deliberations, so we'll need.
Six-fourteen. Efficient, I like that.
I will let you know.
I appreciate that, yeah. She's not in as much of a yank, but anything you can do would be great. That's a spring start. The Filangos would like to get started this fall if possible, so we're not going to do that till we get some sort of indication from you, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, but if you could. Thank you all.
Now, there's, there's nobody else on Zoom besides Anne?
No, Brian's there.
Brian Kavalek?
I'm sorry?
Todd.
Oh, Brian, he's welcome.
Yeah.
So there is an addition. There's two things that we're going to interject here after the conditional use deliberations. One of them is Brian Kavalek is going to be speaking to us. I'm sorry, isn't that supposed to be?
It's before deliberations.
It is. It's, all right, so we're not going to go into deliberations yet. Brian, you have a presentation or?
I just wanted to check in. I sent to Lane the draft of the application that I completed. I just wanted to make sure that people had a chance to look it over. If they have any issues with it, you could talk about it.
They all have a copy, Brian.
Was this what we talked about last night at the slide podium?
Yep.
This is what we're going through right now.
Yeah.
I'm going to read every page.
Twice.
You just did this last night, Brian?
No, I completed the application a week ago.
That's pretty good.
Did you want to read this to us?
It's really lengthy, I don't think you want that.
This is good midnight reading with a lining glass of wine.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else you guys wanted to highlight or talk about in the answers. I did also last night, I asked the select board about who to reach out to for letters of support. I did send an email to Akima Valley Chamber of Commerce today.
Oh, good.
We'll see if I hear back from them. But if there's any other organization in town that makes sense, I looked into the Historic Society. It doesn't look like they have a really active Facebook or website presence anymore, so I don't know if they're really doing much.
What about Coolidge?
Who is it?
Coolidge, the day.
Coolidge?
Yeah, the Coolidge Historical Site. I may want to get that from them.
Yeah.
And are businesses eligible to do this, too, or is it like just?
I think so. I think anybody can.
All right, because I can write one for Chloe's Market, if you like.
Okay. Yeah, if you write it from a business perspective, talk about the need for housing and economic growth in the village and the town, I think that'd be good.
Do you have an example, Brian, of template I could use, or can I get one somewhere?
I could take, I could find one from another MPG application, but I don't have a template.
Okay. That'd be great, if you could send it over.
Okay, and I'll reach out to the Coolidge Historical Site, see if I'll submit one.
What about? Do you want to write one too, Jay?
I can, but.
Who was that, sorry?
I got enough to do.
Would it preschool qualify?
If I need to do one, I will, but.
We'll also do one, too, as the RPC will write a letter of support.
Okay. You need me to, let me know.
Maybe you could check with Bethany Burgess, see if they'll write one.
After my day-to-day, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and then we'll just need to get the resolution form completed. Jay and Lane, you guys are working on that?
Brian, do you want me to, you want us to write your name for the administrator on this resolution forum?
Yeah, that way I can submit it on behalf of the town. I can take what's in there in a Word document, put it in Gears.
Yeah.
If I'm not given that power, then I can't help the town, someone else will have to take that on.
And do you want us to upload it directly to them or send it to you?
Send it to me. It says on the form to upload it with the application, but if you have an error, you can send it, uploading it, then you can send it, you can email it to Jay at ACCD.
So Lane, is this the one that we're going to sign tonight? Fill out?
Yes, you need to sign your name, like we did last night.
Right.
And then we can write in Jay's name and Keith's name for the next two lines, and then Ryan's name will go on the last line.
And then the select board will have to sign the back page.
They did that last night and we have that back page.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, then that should be good. And then the, there's the good, good standing form as well. That just has to be signed by the select board chair.
Where is that? Let me see it.
Maybe we signed that last night.
Okay, I sent it to Jay, I think, two or three weeks ago.
I forwarded to Angela.
The standing form?
I think I, I'm pretty sure I saw that last night.
Okay. Yeah, it's a pretty standard form, just says you guys aren't in any trouble with the government, Dovermont State Agency.
We're trying.
Not today.
All right, and then the last, the last thing is just there's a section about the town's accounting information. I'll call over to Angela or the treasurer.
I filled it out last night, I filled out it extra.
Yeah.
Okay.
There might be a typo in it.
Okay, I think so.
In your.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It doesn't say sign, it just says print.
Your task name, task descriptions in the back. It just mentions Granville.
What's the name?
There's.
There's no pages, there's just some here.
Are you talking about the application form?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the back, they give you like example.
I don't know if you can see it. Is that all?
It's just an example? It's not, we have to fix that?
Is that the example? Yeah.
Like on the back couple of pages after the.
Yeah, it's page nineteen. Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's an example response from another application that was submitted prior. So, yeah, but if there's a reference to Granville, I'll look, I'll look for it and see what that, what that's about. But they give you example-like responses for the questions. These kind of questions. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I copied this from another, some, another application working.
This is a grand, just had some, the Granville PC.
Right. No, I copied those, those lines over from an application my coworker wrote for Granville. I'll choose that right now.
And it's also under the town for an update review, the second, third one down. It's, Granville's there as well.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. Sorry about that, I already caught that.
I did just find a couple of little typo things. Page four.
Mm-hmm.
About halfway down, the updated census data, little paragraph, just two lines, allow the town a better understand, either better understanding or to understand better.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, verb disagreeing there.
Yeah. So, and there was one other little thing, I didn't get through the whole thing, but it looks really good. Page eight, the end of the second paragraph, I think it should be, Two Rivers is the desired contractor to work with the Plymouth Planning Commission. Simple. As the town regional planning commission, Two Rivers is the desired contractor to work, to, the "to" is missing.
Oh, okay.
I read the rest faster, so I'd be ready for tonight since I didn't get it till this afternoon, so that's all I found, because I didn't get further, but I'm sure you've got everything you really need.
Okay. Yeah, if there's anything else, just email me.
If I see anything, I'll pop you an email, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, I'm in good shape. I'm not there because I absolutely have to be on another thing at seven o'clock, so I was going to bail out, but it doesn't look like that may be necessary. Okay.
All right, anything else for me?
Got a question for you. Can you hear me okay? Is, uh. Us, does the town receiving this grant lock us into all of the language that may pertain in the review? Can we be, could it be a plug-and-play style thing whereby if we wanted to adopt some of the language regarding housing, development, compliance with new statute, we could do so, but if we didn't want to do so in terms of the climate action, you know, climate affirmative determination, compliance stuff, do we have to have that in our plan in order to get the grant?
Yeah, yeah, you would, you would want to make a good big effort to include it if you get the grant. If you don't get the grant, then, I mean, I would just simply update the town plan in terms of its data, events, and don't worry about adding and enhancing them unless you need to do something for compliance with statute.
I, I mean, in our town, there's not, I mean, I don't know what, Act 174 and that, you know, what the guidance entails, but there's not really much in this rural town that, you know, I don't, what does the compliance entail in terms of affecting our eligibility for, I don't know, the language here, it says, updated to meet requirements, receive affirmative determination of energy compliance. What does that look like in a town like this?
That means you're, well, in that case, that's not Act, that's a different act. But an energy, affirmative determination of energy compliance means the town contains an enhanced energy plan, which means the town gets more standing in legal proceedings before the Public Utility Commission when it comes to citing energy generation facilities. So you get more weight in those proceedings, your plan gets more weight in those proceedings.
I don't know. I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused by that. I mean, in terms of, again, in terms of our town specifically, how would that look? What, where, you know, what kind of proceeding would we be involved in where that would be, would that would pertain?
I could tell you, like, somebody wants to build a solar farm up by Coolidge, right? And we think it's the wrong thing because it's historic, you know, it's historic district. So you get more, you, us as a planning commission have a greater weight to weigh in on one of those things. If you don't have it in your town plan, you're kind of like, you don't, you're not going to say anything. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're, you're given, your town plans go and do consideration if you don't have an enhanced energy plan. That just means the PUC may consider any policies you have in there. Up to their discretion if they want to apply them or not as conditions in a permit. But if you go to the PUC with an enhanced energy plan, they have to apply the policies in your town plan unless they determine in writing that a greater public good is served by not applying them. So it's a much higher standard.
So we'd have to come up with language like Jay just said, right, in our town plan? Like we wouldn't cite solar farms in specific areas or, you know, something to that effect?
Yeah, you'd look for, look at other plans, their citing policies they have. Where are you okay with it? Where do you not want it? What conditions do you want around it? Screening requirements, things like that. Yeah, you would put that in the town plan as policies.
Got it. Thank you. Any other question?
Brian, do we have to vote tonight at the board? Does it have to vote tonight with regards to this resolution?
I would, just to be safe, just vote to have the chair sign it.
And that happens before they sign it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just pass a motion.
Somebody wanna make a motion that we sign this and move forward?
Do we wanna discuss it before we do that?
Would you like to?
Yeah.
You need to make the motion first?
On his time?
No, we wanna discuss it first, before we make a motion.
On our time, not his time.
If we're functioning with Robert's rules, you have to make the motion and then have a discussion.
And then you discuss it.
I'm saying, should we discuss it amongst, like we do with these? We can let him go and then make a motion to discuss it, he doesn't have to hang on the phone.
He, he doesn't have to, and yet, he's going to be here...
The administrator?
Pardon me? No, actually, we can do this on our own time, Brian doesn't have to stick around. Brian, we're gonna discuss this and decide if we're voting on it and to sign it, and then we'll let you know what happens.
Okay.
In the meantime, I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt a municipal resolution for a municipal planning grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now, is there a discussion?
Yeah, I just, we all, we're all, obviously, everyone's in agreement, we wanna proceed, but same question has come up every time, like the last time we did it, in terms of subjecting the town to the state's criteria all the time.
We can, we can do whatever we want with our own town plan.
Well, we can, we could say we wanna put up 100-foot flag balls.
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't have to make that decision now, what we have to decide and vote on is, are we gonna move forward for a grant to help us implement a new town plan?
Right.
In other words, we, we're gonna pay Brian's firm to handle this along with us, since they know what they're doing.
Well, to add all this compliance, yeah, we get the grant, we pay 1,500, they get to match it, you know, we match it, then they come in and they model our town plan in accordance with state statute. We could say, we don't need the grant, we're not taking any money, we're just gonna look at our town plan, say, is there anything in here that needs to change? Probably not, and then it won't be in compliance with state statute, but it's our town plan.
We'd lose rights if it's not in compliance, and I think that's worth it.
If you, if you do that, if you don't follow the requirements of statute when you're creating a town plan, you won't be able to get regional plan approval. Without regional plan approval, you can't get any future planning grants until the town plan is adopted to be compliant with statute.
It's a catch 22.
It is a catch 22.
I mean, we got that MERC grant, and if we didn't have like a broadband policy in place, whatever, we never would've got that. It's like, you gotta have all these things in place to get other things, and I think, you know, it's like we found in Irene, or not Irene, this last flood, 23, had we had not had all like a limp in place, a local hazard mitigation plan, we'd never get that, you know, last, I think it's, was it 12%, 12 and a half percent that the state covers that, you know, out of that, so it's like, I don't know, we're only on the hook for like $180,000 off that $2 million of damage, so I mean, you know, you just don't, you don't qualify for programs if you don't get this stuff done, that's the hard part.
And it will wind up costing more money in the long run, I suspect.
So, is there anything else discussion-wise on this? Nobody has anything to add? Then we'll take a vote. All in favor of passing the motion?
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed, too. I'll just, I'll oppose to it.
You're opposed?
Aye.
Are you really? Okay. Two opposed.
I have it.
The motion passes.
By virtue of principle, I think you're stuck.
I know.
You are stuck.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna be stuck.
That's all I'm trying to do. It's the legislature comes up with all these ideas, and then we have to comply.
Vote against the people that told us we have to do it.
Yep, I do all the time. Wait, yeah, she, Ann voted, you had four, two, right?
Yep.
Four to, four to two.
Yeah, it passed.
Good.
It's hard to turn down money. It's hard to turn down money.
It always has strings.
You can't cut off your nose and spine.
Absolutely.
Then they should just do, we should, they should just do the plan for it, well, they are doing it for it.
That's what I was saying.
You pay 1,500 bucks, they do it for it, here's your plan, now go home, now.
Does that have a point? Or Big Brother watching, that's all.
So the hearings are closed, now we can deliberate on these two conditional use hearings.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Even for a tough bunch.
You need a gab-overs.
I got a shillelagh out in the truck.
There you go.
Bring that sucker in.
Are we stopping recording of our deliberative session?
Yes, we should, we always do.